Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order and advise everyone that this meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone else in attendance recording this? There being none, if you'll join me with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Are there any citizens' concerns or comments? There being none, I will now turn it over to our student representatives for their report.
All right. Well, a couple of weeks ago, the high school and middle school had their annual course and band winter concerts. And over the weekend, the ski club had their Sunday River trip, which was Monday through Sunday, and I heard that was a lot of fun. Everyone came back all windburned, so it must have been good. This Friday, there's not going to be any school, but the International Club is going to be serving the teachers at the faculty luncheon with international foods. And next week, Model UN is going on their trip to DC. And today, the underclassmen chose next year's courses.
All right, so I have that starring next Monday, that spring sports will start, which is really kind of a... It kind of flew by that it's already March now, so the spring sports are starting. And the NHS induction, the applications were sent in now as the sophomores, juniors, seniors who applied for NHS, they're finally getting their application back to see if they got in or not. So the ceremony will be coming up mid-April. We found today that the yearbook has finally been finished, and they're having a little party because they finished it. It's pretty nice. And then the play is being held this weekend, the Play for Footloose is being held this weekend, and I know that it's been doing a really good job, and it looks pretty good, as you can see. And then finally, last night, Trekksgiving was hosted, it was the first annual Trekksgiving. And it was kind of like a Potlatch-style dinner where every member brought their own food. Our coach was nervous because he thought no one was going to come, and you have to buy 15 pizzas for everybody and no food. But it was really fun, and we got our varsity players that nice, and it was kind of a fun way to send off the year.
Very nice. How's the college search going?
Pretty good.
You on our way, narrowing? No?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's in that stage between like after we get accepted and before we get the financial aid packages, so it's coming. We'll decide soon.
I remember well last year. Well, keep us posted on that, too. Any other questions, by any... There being none, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, accept a motion to accept the regular session minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Now, we can move on.
Thank you, Mr. Che. We have several guests here this evening. The first one is Mr. Kennard and Mr. Bonaccio, who came before you at a recent meeting to share the great news that their We the People team will represent Massachusetts and DC in April. They're here actually tonight to officially request your support. There was a packet sent to you regarding the field trip, so they would be happy to answer any questions, detailed packet including itinerary and as well as a PowerPoint. Do I want to turn it over to Mr. Kennard and Mr. Bonaccio?
Mr. Che.
Jeff.
Jeff.
Yes.
I have to recuse myself.
To Google Chrome?
Yeah.
We're going to have to click it.
So I'm Spencer Kennard, teacher at Auburn High School.
And I'm Vince Bonaccio, also a teacher at Auburn High.
And thank you for hearing us tonight.
Hello?
Yes.
All right. Here we go.
So as you guys remember, in January, our students won the We the People State Championship at Harvard University, and since then, we've been actively planning our trip to represent the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in Washington, DC at the end of April through fundraising and also through speech preparation.
Yep. The fundraising has been going quite swimmingly thus far. We're a little bit over 50 percent of our way there, and in such a short period of time, that's actually pretty astounding. There we are as the winners, very modest. Here we are with Congressman Govern, which, by the way, we've been contacted with his office, and they're in the process of figuring out if we can get a tour of the White House. It's looking...
Promising.
Promising, yeah, I guess. But we won't know about that until April. That's on the White House's end. We'll cut them some slack on that. So, as we said in the, I think when we first met, the goal's pretty substantial. We're trying to like raise $47,000. That would, if we met that mark, it would be free and clear for all the students, and that's our ultimate goal. So, and we have about a month to get there, so that's pretty good. At this point, we're a little over $25,000. I think we're approaching 26-ish at this point. We've had donations from like tons of places, mainly the district, at all levels, although one of the, which our local school has been particularly...
Bryn Mawr's school has been very, very generous.
Yeah, yeah. The teachers there have been, I know they have like a jeans day, so the funds that they usually go, they do for that, they've been, you know, giving to us, which has been fabulous. Various organizations and foundations and a lot, a lot of private individuals, mostly private, probably close to 20,000 of that has come from an aggregation, an aggregate of all private people. Currently, we're doing lots of raffle ticket sales. We're going to be at a spaghetti dinner we're hosting on Saturday, the 29th, from 5:00 to 8:30. We're going to be doing the drawings for the raffles, and there's a variety of excellent prizes that we have. Something may escape me for the moment, so we'll move on. So we have a website, GoFundMe, where we're having some really good anonymous donations. We just got a recent $500 anonymous donation, which was, which was pretty good. Recently, this past Sunday, we did fundraiser Buffalo Wild Wings, which was hosted by Mr. Gardner, one of our students' fathers. We don't know how well we did, but it was quite well, almost $1,000. This Friday, we have something at Papagino, so if you like... Thursday. Thursday, sorry. So if you like pizza, go between 4:00 and 8:00, and that'll be that.
So for donations, we decided to, we want to really recognize those who have given us over $1,000. And as you guys can see, it's, you know, quite a substantial list, and really to recognize the pathos's for their very generous support of $5,000. And that came in, I believe, last week, and it was just, you know, just very, very, very generous, and we were very touched that they thought to give us that much money. With Auburn Public School with $3,500, the Auburn Education Association with $2,000, Worcester Pistol and Rifle Club, $1,500, the Broder Memorial Foundation with $1,000, and they also said they would match $1,000, so we'll probably be ending up getting another $1,000 from them in the near future.
Yeah, they had a challenge for us. If we were able to raise X dollars in a short period of time, they would, they would give us another $1,000, which we met quickly, so they were happy about that.
Yep. The Auburn Masons for $1,000, LaFleur Electrical Company for $1,000, which is actually, we're in relationships to Nicole Bobrowski's family, so thank you for that. And the Fallon Community Health Plan gave us $1,000 as well. So really just, you know, to recognize these people and say thank you, and certainly there are others who've given, you know, a substantial amount as well.
And not to marginalize all the others, but this was actually quite amazing. All right. So going to DC, it'll be myself and Mr. Kennard, but we also need some female teachers. So Ms. Gore and Ms. Heidemann are going to be coming as well. We have 31 students, and their families, if they want to go, but all are welcome, so if you want to come with us, feel free. So that's, that's it in terms of people. Our itinerary is actually starting to materialize. I just got a phone call. I know the hotel information was really important. I just got a phone call on my way here, actually, so we'll get to that in a second. But our goal, our goal, we have to leave the high school around 4:30 in the morning on the 25th. We'll be there in Washington for the 25th through the 28th, and we'll be back late on the 29th, so the team will miss Monday and Tuesday of that school week. Leaving from Providence, we thought that would be easier to get to than Logan.
And easier to manage the students there, too, with only one terminal instead of the seven terminals with the chance of going on an international flight by accident.
Yeah, that wouldn't go too well. So World Strives, the company that's coordinating this event, was able to accommodate us on that, which is pretty great. So this is it, and we'll leave, and we'll return to Logan, and we'll be back on the 29th around 6:00 PM. Transportation, though, to and from, we're working on. Okay. So this is the information. I know people, we're all interested now. The plan is, and this is tentative right now, there's apparently a couple of states that haven't had the competition yet. So the woman who's coordinating this needs to find out how big those teams are, because depending on the size of the teams will determine which hotel can accommodate them. So it's kind of like a big shell game on their end. But for now, she said it's most likely we're going to be at the Holiday Inn, which is like about a couple of miles away from Dulles Airport, and this is the address. So this information probably isn't in the packet that you were given. I'm sure we can print this out, and we'll get it to you somehow. We do want to let everyone know that security is provided for this, and they will be on guard from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM to prevent any sort of shenanigans from happening, which is good. It's also good that all meals will be provided for this trip, although we're responsible for like breakfast and the dinner then when we get back. So once we're in DC, you know, we're taken care of. So go to Dunk's in the morning and McDonald's when we get back, I don't know. So our specific agenda is still in the process of being finalized. You know, they ask for requests of where we would like to go, and all 50 teams make their own requests, so they're going to try, and they try to accommodate us as best as they can. And from what we've been told, pretty much, we always, the teams always get what they want. We're going to be competing the 26th and the 27th, that's definite, and I am confident we will also be competing on the 28th, we'll get to that. As I said earlier, the White House tour is pending a security approval and availability. The places we go to, the fees are already taken care of. It's kind of like rolled into the price. Most of them are free except for a couple of them.
The new theme being one, so if you're planning on coming, that would be one, that would be, would be an additional charge, but again, covered by the price of our trip.
Yeah. So we're gonna, we're hoping to go to the Air and Space Museum, connected to Dulles Airport. The museum, we're hoping to do a wreath laying at the World War II Memorial at the Massachusetts pillar. The Holocaust Museum, Bureau of Engraving and Printing, the Mint, the National Archives, so we can see the Declaration of Independence itself and have a night of fun at Sheer Manus, which is like an interactive play. We also have included in our price a group photo in front of the Capitol, which is pretty neat. So the national competition, so rounds one and two is going to be at George Mason University, which is only a few miles from our, from our hotel. So Saturday, we have an early start, which is good. We'll be there at 8:00. So that's an early, that's an early rise for the team, and we'll compete from 9:00 to 11:20. Sunday, 11:00 afternoon session from 1:20 to 4:40. So that's, you know, makes Sunday an interesting day. Now, when we make the top 10, Monday, the time isn't set, but that will be at the House of Representatives. So when we get there, that'll be great.
And for standards covered, really all, all United States standards according, prescribed by the state of Massachusetts, all United States government standards are addressed by the competition, and this includes standards addressed by the AP curriculum created by the College Board, and also the Center for Civic Education curriculum as well, which aligns itself with the Common Core.
Yeah. And thank you.
Any questions?
Genuinely, yeah.
Yes.
I have a couple, if I may, thank you.
Absolutely.
First, on the list of different places where you're planning on going, are everybody, is everybody going to attend these?
The students?
Students, yes.
Yeah, we go as a group.
Okay, so who's going to be left at the hotel?
No, 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 no.
Everybody will go.
The company that's, is doing this is very adamant that you go as a group and no one leaves.
Okay.
And it's all done by, on a coach bus with a guide, with a tour guide provided by the company, and so they'll accompany us to all the different museums that we go to.
Okay, that kind of leads me into my second question, thank you, which is getting to and from all these different places and everything, does it designated bus or using public transportation or?
No, it's a bus.
Our own bus, we have our own bus that we're designated to. We may be sharing it with another state, but because our team is so large, chances are we will have our own coach bus to bring us around the Capitol and to and from George Mason University and any museums that we go to.
Yeah, because they have to coordinate 50 schools to go to George Mason and go to all these sites, it's a very structured weekend. There's going to be very, very little free time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, they also, they also add in actual time to study and prep. So they're working on when our, when our time to actually prepare will be. So, there you go. We have study nights.
Sweet.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
I just want to commend you guys. You did a great job preparing them, getting us the first victory, and now organizing this, and the rate that the donations have come in, spectacular, and it says a lot about what you guys have been doing.
Thank you. It says a lot for the town for really rallying behind this. I think you're...
Absolutely. It's like having, having another job on top of your regular job, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I would just like to say I agree with George, what he's saying, and the other thing I would like to say is good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And thank you and the students for all their time and effort into this. It's a big undertaking, and you did a tremendous job.
Thank you. It was, it was all them, really.
Well, it takes them and you, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'd like to say to him closing, congratulations to all the students. I mean, it's a great accomplishment, and you're representing the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I agree, you know, a lot of hard work, you know, getting this project together, and I'm in total support, and I think this is a phenomenal opportunity for our kids and to showcase, you know, what we're doing and what you're accomplishing as teachers here at Auburn. So like the rest of the committee, I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I would like to make the motion to approve the We the People trip to Washington, DC to compete in the national finals of the competition.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
And then we'll move on.
The next item is the Program of Studies that comes before you annually. Mr. Hanfield is here. Included in your packet was a summary of the changes that were noted, and this actually leads in, we will need a vote of your support on that, but also leads into the Freshman Academy. As you saw in the summary of changes, that's probably the most substantial of them. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Hanfield, and he has his team of people here with him tonight. There's Mrs. Late, there is Ms. Donahue, everyone knows. Who else is in the back? Oh, Mrs. Kuschulik is there, Mr. Luca, and Libby...
Mados.
Mados. Oh, Andy Wiki, I'm sorry, Andy, whose team just had a great game on Saturday, actually. Came up with a loss, but it was a great game.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. In order of sequence in the agenda, Program of Studies for 2014-15 is before you. For inclusion changes, if you will, page 21, Level of Study Guidelines, we streamline that to basically make that be more inclusive of students who are seeking honors level study. Next year, we're offering an Intro to Radio Broadcasting course. We're very fortunate that we are able to use the information-based radio system that belongs to Auburn Public Access at 1610 AM while we seek final approval for our own independent 10-watt radio station. Mr. Bergman is working on getting that clearance. We, again, are grateful and thank the Cable Committee and Public Access for working with us to bring this exciting opportunity to our students. Calculus BC will be offered next year for the first time at the AP level, bringing our AP total classes to 16. That will be offered onsite and in Auburn High School. And then, as Dr. Brunel alluded to, the Freshman Academy description, which is pretty straightforward. So, if you have any questions on that, if there are any.
Any questions?
Do you want to take a motion on the Program of Studies?
Probably.
Yeah, then we'll go on to the presentation.
I want to take a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the Auburn High School's Program of Studies for the 2014-2015 school year.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And continuing on, so we're here also tonight, as Dr. Brunel indicated and introduced people here in the audience, to update you on where we are with the creation of the Freshman Academy. The entire team is about 25 of us in all of the high school working on this project. The individuals that Dr. Brunel introduced to you tonight are representatives from each of our content areas, including special education. And with us tonight would be our wellness and guidance. They had other obligations. So these people here in the audience tonight serve as the liaisons between their departments and me, and kind of help facilitate the work that's going on in the, in the different departments and within the school at large. Last time we spoke, we did not have confirmation yet as to whether or not we had received that grant from the state we were working on to help fund the planning, and I'm pleased to announce that we have received that grant in early, mid-February, we received that. So that was a $10,000 award from the state of Massachusetts to help fund the planning and getting this off the ground. And with a little bit of luck, this will lead us into a bigger grant opportunity next year that will help us do even more work within our high school at large. On the 25th of February, we had our eighth grade orientation, so this PowerPoint is somewhat of what I talked with the parents about that evening, and it's also some of the information that I have shared with you previously to kind of help give you context in terms of where we are now. So the entire genesis of the freshman year, and as I joke with the parents, was, you know, this is, you know, I think, parents and kids, not just kids coming into their freshman year. And ironically, as I was driving somewhere with my daughter this afternoon, this topic came up on her end, not mine, because class selections are coming up for the eighth graders, and she was already starting to feel a little stressed and harried about the whole process. So I was kind of trying to bring her back down to earth as we were driving down 290 this afternoon. But I think it speaks to a larger issue that I think a lot of our freshmen feel, as well as parents, but obviously, we're educating the freshmen in part. Again, this slide here, this is something I've shared with you before, just speaking to, you know, how critical the grade nine year is from, you know, the developmental phase of our kids to, you know, really the success of our students in grade nine. And the research is pretty clear that if we don't have our kids being successful in grade nine and feeling part of our school community, they're at risk to drop out, and that sets them up for failure further on down the line as they become adults. So we have four pieces of our academy. First, obviously, is our academic focus, and as I've said to you previously, talking about the social and emotional development of our kids, fostering that sense of community, and then this idea of cognitive self-regulation. So with the academic focus, again, you know, one of the major underpinnings of this initiative is our students will be using iPads. They will all have their own iPad next year, and so they'll be learning their, or going through their curriculum, but also learning how to use the iPad in kind of a hybrid environment. We'll also be focusing on, in particular, 21st century skills and delivering those skills in a fashion that's consistent across the grades, or rather, across the classes in grade nine. Key skills focused there are some of the ones that have been identified, came out of actually some of our discussions in strategic planning in November, has come out of discussions with our School Improvement Council at the high school, and actually has also come out of discussions with some of our, our upperclassmen, especially our seniors who are getting ready to graduate. So it's a pretty meaty core curriculum that they'll be facing, that they'll be dealing with. So the three pieces that I guess in terms of where we are, in terms of academic focus that we've identified, is we have our core ninth-grade curriculum, we have our one-to-one iPad implementation, and then above that, we have our 21st century skills implementation. The piece about 21st century skills, I haven't really talked too, too much about, but I'll take a minute tonight to discuss it. You know, I think when we talk about 21st century skills, I think we talk about it. I'm not so sure how much our kids coming in, especially, you know, our younger kids, understand what those are. And so in a very systematic way, as part of our academy, we're going to be introducing what 21st century skills are, what they look like, what they look like done well, and then they'll be having an opportunity to practice those within the context of their classroom, with their teachers, within the context of our curriculum, within the context of using their iPads. The social emotional development piece is, like I said, we've talked about that before as well, you know, focusing on proper decision-making, stress management, using social media appropriately, planning for the future, getting involved, service learning, physical and mental wellness, and the list goes on, is the second piece that we're looking at. We're going to be using this text as our primary text, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. It's written by Sean Covey, who's, I believe, a relative of Stephen Covey, who you've heard quite a bit about, maybe a son, I'm not sure. And we're looking at positive self-image with kids, physical wellness, mental wellness, building relationships, you know, assessing and reacting to peer pressure, setting goals and achieving them, and then giving them the idea that they control their own destinies, that they have the ability as ninth graders to start taking responsibility for their actions. In addition to this text, we'll be using a leadership curriculum that's provided by Justin's company. That's really terrific, and like I said, trying to work on some of these social emotional issues that we know are impacting our kids in grade nine. Cognitive self-regulation, I think one of the biggest pieces, you know, of our, of our kids is that, you know, they don't have, and if you've ever listened to Joni Gelman talk about, you know, our kids coming in in grade nine, she's the speaker that we bring in to talk to our freshman parents in August every year, you know, our kids don't have the ability to self-regulate oftentimes because developmentally they're not there yet. They haven't necessarily been kind of taught to stop and think and reflect before they act, a lot of impulsive type of behavior. So one of the things that we want to do is kind of start to train them to be able to self-regulate. And so there's four pieces to that. Sensory regulation, executive functioning, social cognition, and sensory integration. And you can see below each one of those boxes kind of what that is in a nutshell. Sensory regulation, being able to process, respond, and interpret feelings. Executive functioning, which is the front part of the brain. Kids will be playing roles in figuring out how to, you know, guide their actions in a positive and productive manner. Social cognition pieces, you know, learning by observing what's positive, what's negative, looking at different situations and assessing those and making determinations with the guidance of adults in the room to help, you know, kind of guide those conversations. And then this idea of sensory integration, you know, who you are, where you are, what's happening around you, and how is that affecting you. So there's a lot to that as well. So that's the third piece. And then our last piece is our freshman-only activities. Again, we want to foster community. You know, we're starting to talk about class trips now, we're starting to talk about class activities. Obviously, there'll be class meetings, there'll be freshman-wide community service built into our academy. This is kind of a mock-up of a nice T-shirt we'd like to have, graduation class of 2018, so they're all on the same team. We're kicking around mottos for the class. We don't know what those will be yet. Probably would like to ask the kids when they come in what they think would be a cool motto to add to this T-shirt. And then obviously, the destination is graduation 2018. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. So, you know, in sum, exciting that we received that grant. As you can see from that presentation, the frame, you know, that I talked about back in November and even in February with you, the frame of the academy is coming together. Right now, the group that's in the room tonight, we meet on Mondays after school to talk about kind of the direction of the academy. This past Monday, we met, and what we're working on right now is identifying apps for the iPads that make sense not only by discipline, but make sense across the grade. For example, what type of note-taking app will we use that'll be consistent across grade nine? Whereas in a discipline, you know, specific format, it might be, you know, what's the best, you know, app for graphing that, you know, kids will be using kind of standard across, you know, grade nine? What's the best app for, you know, annotating, you know, things like that? So the teams are working on that. Friday, as Dr. Lozey will be speaking to you about a little bit later, we have our Professional Development Day. We'll be spending some time during that to kind of de-ear, kind of what all the teams... We'll be spending some time during that to kind of de-ear, kind of what all the teams have come up with, and when we meet next Monday, you know, we'll start identifying and hammering out what those final apps are. While that's going on simultaneously, this is running on several tracks, so while that's going on, we're developing the cognitive self-regulation curriculum, and while that's going on simultaneously, we're also working with guidance and phys ed and the health departments to come up with our freshman seminar wellness curriculum. So it's very, very busy, very, very busy, and we're excited, and I think I didn't have to twist too many arms to get them here tonight. So, I mean, they're here, they're excited, and, you know, certainly, I did the bulk of the talking because they're afraid to, but told me you guys are an easy audience. So any questions or comments from myself or the group, anyone's happy to answer.
Ryan?
I, do you have any?
I always do. Go ahead.
Mr. Ian Field, one thing that I would like you to just keep kind of a little bit of a stronger focus on a little bit is that I know students who, for one reason or another, do very well in high school, things, the subject just seems to come to them pretty well, they don't really put a lot of effort into getting, passing tests and things, they get to college, they don't have the study habits.
Sure.
Because they didn't need them.
Right.
In high school. I have a daughter who that happened to, so when she got to college, she didn't really know how to study, because things just kind of went easier for her in high school. So that's just one piece, you know, we were talking about study strategies and things.
Sure, yeah.
That are like, you just kind of keep in mind that you are going to have students that it's going to be hard to teach them those study habits.
Sure.
Because they don't utilize them at that time.
Yeah, you know, the original, I guess the original idea when we were talking about this as a group was, the original title is the Freshman Boot Camp, and it was around, you know, in its infancy, it was around what you're describing, and I know pretty much everybody in the audience here tonight can speak to what you're saying, that we're finding those same things, and that's one of the areas that we think is problematic, and so absolutely, that's going to be part of what we're doing.
Great.
In addition to others that were listed, and probably others will think about as we're going through this process.
Thank you, that was the only comment I had.
Liz?
In my comment to what Mrs. Gibbrey just said, I, you know, with the fact that you have sixteen AP classes, I would hope that the study skills that you're teaching would actually be used at the high school level for at least the students in the AP classes, so I hope that won't be an issue. I wanted to ask you a few questions, how will this fit into the freshman schedules?
So the idea behind this is that, so we're in a trimester, and so the scheduling aspects of it don't change, in the sense that there's not going to be a radical schedule change for freshmen versus what the rest of the school is doing. What we're working on right now in terms of the scheduling part of this is how do we get, how can we get creative in terms of our current structure in utilizing that time to accomplish some of the things within the academy we want to do? So part of that might be backing teachers up, say, in the math and sciences, so they can have flexible instructional time. Same thing could be said for humanities. Another situation could be, you know, maybe once a week, you know, D-period or whatever the period is on a Friday, you know, we shorten by thirty minutes and, you know, we're, myself and everyone in the room, we have our kids, and we're talking about self-regulation, we're talking about, you know, other aspects that we've talked about here in the academy. So the actual scheduling of it, the kids won't know any different, or see anything different than what they're seeing now. I think it's the purposeful structure we're putting kind of around it.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep.
I guess the best way to describe it is if you went to the beach and they have those like orange floaties out there to keep you from going too far out, that's kind of what I envision, you know, kind of, everyone's kind of encapsulated, but it's not such a rigid structure, say, like a middle school teaming process, because we want our kids to grow somewhat, but in a controlled fashion. So, you know, in terms of the leveling of courses and all of those types of things, none of that gets affected.
Okay. First of all, I want to say, it's amazing that you have teachers that will stay after school on Monday and do this, and I keep saying that every time we have teachers come in here and they're doing things other than, you know, extra, it just always amazes me. I think that's why our schools are doing so well, and for the high school, my kids, my last one is graduating, so I have most of my experience lately is with the high school, and I'm your biggest cheerleader, so I think you guys are doing an amazing job. My question is, this program, is it more of a proactive or a reactive? And if it's more of a reactive, what do you think your hope, you know, what is your biggest hope to get the kids to be able to do from this program?
I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't say it's reactive. If, if, if you were to look back in our school improvement plans from 2008, '09, '10, this is, this idea has always been out there for us to get there one day with our kids, but it was one of those circumstances where, coming off of 2007, we had just finished our accreditation, we had all of that follow-up work to do, we were doing different things within our building already in terms of just changing over, you know, our curriculum, and we were still kind of in that transitional phase, and this year was finally the year that we were in a place, I felt, and in talking with folks in the building, they all felt the same, that we could launch this initiative. I feel badly, or guilty, I guess, in some respects, that we didn't, we couldn't do it earlier, but it just, there's only so much time in a day, and, you know, and I was kind of lamenting that with our school improvement council folks, because many of the parents have children who are older, and they were thrilled at the idea, but I could see kind of like the dark's coming at me, and so why didn't you do it five years ago? But, so no, I wouldn't say it's reactive, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's more of a proactive piece, because I think, to what Mrs. Gibbrey has said and what you said as well, you know, we want to make sure that we're putting our kids in the best possible positions to be successful when they get out of high school, and that's, that's having skills in their back pocket, that's having the latest, you know, cutting-edge technology, you know, knowledge, that's being exposed to a very rigorous core curriculum that will continue as they go up, you know, '10, '11, and '12. And I see this as a first step and a fourth step process that, you know, I envision in academy structure, and I think we all do, each year, it'll be, you know, so next year would be '09, '10, and then the following year is '09, '10, '11, and '09, '10, '11, '12. So every year, this model is going to kind of take on a life of its own at the upper grade levels, with the focal points being what's more applicable at those age levels. And so that's, that's really kind of the genesis of it. I think it's like anything else, too, you know, I don't know, I guess if you use home decorating as an example, I don't like things getting stale, and every once in a while, you have to paint your house. Well, I mean, same thing applies to our high school, I mean, we all think of it as our house, and we don't want things getting stale, because the world is moving far too fast, and, you know, our kids deserve to get the very best we can give them, so, so that's kind of where it's come from. And we're also very fortunate that we have, you know, your support, that the town, and when I say town, I mean the townspeople, but I also mean Town Hall, Superintendent, we have everyone's support, that's also very helpful, too. So we're at a great time right now to launch something like this. We couldn't do it if we didn't have everybody, you know, kind of pulling in the same direction, which is great for our kids.
And I just want to say that in your, your statement about why you didn't do it five years ago, where you were five years ago and where you are today, you've done so much, so it just keeps getting better, so thanks very much. Melissa.
I'll, I'll just say, as a school community member, I mean, and I go back to, you know, We the People presentation tonight, the attention to detail that you provide is excellent, and I think that's why you see there's not a lot of questions, but I guess my final comments, just as a parent, I want to thank you. As the father of an eighth grader who's going to be entering the high school, I think this is fantastic that you're addressing some of these issues with them, and I'll even say kudos to the, to the middle school staff who are really working with our kids now, both of our daughters.
Absolutely.
Identifying, you know, where they should be as far as honors and AP, and really helping to guide them as they transition from the middle school to the high school. So I will tell you as a parent how much I truly appreciate all your efforts, and it speaks volumes, as Liz says, where we are, and I can't wait to see where we're going. So I really do.
I'm kind of afraid to see where we're going.
Thank you.
It's all right.
But thank you very much.
Superintendent will be with me every step of the way, so it's all good.
I'm sorry, Wayne, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to say, I'm not a parent anymore, but as Liz had said, in the past five years, the growth that's been going on in this school department, school committee, the teachers, the principals, everything has been fantastic. I haven't seen so much of an upscale moving forward for our children that I have in the past five years, and I want to thank each and every one of you.
All right, I'm not going to be the only one. No, thanks for orchestrating this, Casey. I look forward from the first time you brought this to us, to see what it was going to turn into, and thanks to all the teachers for hopping on board and making it work. I know, I know what it takes, I know the extra effort that goes in, the extra hours, and that I appreciate. You're not treating it as if it's a seven-to-two job. You're obviously doing your homework and you're getting things done. And as a parent of some little ones who will be there at some point after the, after the Freshman Academy is probably stale, but hopefully have some new ideas.
Well, no, they'll just take on like version like 7.0.
There you go. I know, I want to thank you for all the extra efforts, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Good stuff.
Yes.
And I echo the comments and those who are here tonight and those who couldn't be here, it really is a team effort, so it's a great, great program.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do you want to release them now, or just?
Yes. You've spent plenty of time with us, if you'd like to go and be with your families. Thank you for staying.
Thanks very much.
And we can move on to the March 14th.
The next item, as has become the tradition, our March 14th Professional Development Day. Dr. Lozay has done a tremendous amount of coordinating, organizing, and wants to just provide some highlights for you. We will once again be doing this with the Leicester Public Schools, but it is Dr. Lozay who really does the lion's share of this entire day.
Okay, back again, seems like it was only a few short months ago, not a whole year ago, but I'm very excited to share with you this year our menu for this coming Friday. I think you'll be impressed as we walk through it together. As Dr. Brunel said, we're once again collaborating with the Leicester Public Schools. I think that that allows us to provide more options for our teachers, but it also extends their professional learning network that they can collaborate with going forward. I'm going to scroll down a little bit, but there are surprises. This year, we have over fifty different offerings. You have a copy in front of you, so that you can follow along if you'd like. With the fifty different offerings, we have thirty-eight staff members from either Auburn or Leicester that have volunteered to present at least one workshop. Some of them have also offered two or more. In addition to our own in-house experts, we have also brought in some outside vendors to join us, and these vendors support our district initiatives in key areas such as using iPads to transform teaching and learning. We have some STEM, we have some co-teaching, and we have Keys to Literacy. So as you can probably guess from looking at this menu, it was very difficult, very difficult for people to decide what sessions to actually register for, and even as late as three o'clock this afternoon, we were still changing our minds, so I anticipate that tomorrow will be the same. But I'd like you to take a look at some of the variety of our offerings. We again start our day with the safety presentation, this is a great opportunity for the safety team to present to the entire faculty and review our safety plans. We have a keynote coming in, Aaron Polansky, also known as Geek Sock. He was highly recommended by Eileen Dunnehugh, who had seen him at a secondary school meeting and said that he was inspirational, so I'm looking forward to him, and I'm sure he will live up to his reputation. We have some blocks that last the entire day, and some of those are mandated as our co-teaching is for our pares. We've been doing a lot of work with co-teaching with our teachers, our special and regular teachers, and our paraprofessionals have asked, well, what role can we play in that? So we are spending the day providing them with some training. We have other all-day events around fractions, because we've found with MCAS that that's a very difficult area, so we've brought in an outside vendor to present on that. Again, as we all know, we continue to talk about our iPad initiatives and transforming teaching and learning using them. We have the creating and collaborating with iPads, and that will be for our novice iPad users, our seventh grade teachers who will be starting next year, and some of our ninth grade teachers. But we also wanted to offer an iPad session that would be for the more intermediate learner. EdTech is a company that we've used in the past, they're out of Harvard, and they are phenomenal. Mr. Diitrillo continues to offer his core reading, which the area districts adore, so we also have members coming from other districts, not just Leicester, to attend that. For the first time, we're offering DISG Golf, a lifetime fitness for the phys ed teachers, and we're very excited about that. We have lots of technology offerings, we have our own in-house experts offering some of that. We have Data with the Edwin Analytics, which is the old data warehouse through Desi. We wanted to include a lot of STEM, seeing that's been part of our past strategic plan and continues to be a focus as we go forward, so we have some for primary as well as the secondary. I think it's really difficult sometimes to teach STEM and science courses at the secondary level with our high needs students and our special education students, so we actually have WPI coming in to share a session around that. We have engineering a story, which I'm dying to take, because that sounds really exciting for the primary. Again, we have CPR and AED training this year, we have our own trainers in-house that have been trained. We also have been fortunate to purchase our own equipment, so we will not need to rent that. We have Easter Seals coming, they're going to do some iPad training for our speech and language people and our special educators. We again have trauma coming back, every year the evaluations say, everyone should see this, everyone should see this, so again, he is booked solid. The keynote will offer a few additional sessions, one called Walk a Mile in My Corderoy's, it's a lot about setting goals and trying to transform lives. We have grant writing, cyber safety through the DA's. We have a lot of math offerings, this for grade six through 12, which Annette Lemreis was department, the department head at the high school is offering. We have a new one here from Tess and Amy of the guidance department at the high school, helping teachers to write powerful student recommendations. Keys to Literacy has come in in the past and done a lot of work around comprehension and vocabulary. They now have a new module around content writing, so we're offering that for our grades four to eight, and there's another one later in the day for our secondary teachers. We've done a lot around co-teaching, so we're going to be giving an opportunity for partners to work together and do some lesson, lesson planning for the inclusive classroom. Sue Saunders used to actually co-teach for many years, and she's now a team chair. Pam Kaufman is going to be explaining the 504 system, the eligibility for it, the process for it, and the procedures. We have classroom management, and we're going to offer law for the classroom teacher, which is a new offering to share. With ed eval, you've heard a lot about the district-determined measures, we have somebody coming in to work with our staff around those, what makes them effective, valid, and she's a former Auburn employee, Dr. Debray. Freshman Academy will be spending some time, like Casey referred to. Again, we don't want to exclude our special education teachers, so we're doing a lot with developmental disabilities. We have another session of cyber safety, because that's always popular. Eric Bouvier is going to do some iPads for the elementary classrooms, because those are the two offerings we're really geared for the higher levels. Defusing Anger and Aggression is a Leicester Public School individual who is coming, and this will be great for a lot of our guidance people, and again, for some of our special educators that have to de-escalate students. Here is the Keys to Content Writing at the high school, same presenter, a lot of special education for our pares. Hands-on Equations, Purposeful, which is another interesting offering that I'm looking forward to seeing the evals on. Gardening is being offered again, because that was one that was asked to return. More technology, more STEM, as you can see. We have our pre-AP vertical team meeting these days as well, to look at student work across the different grade levels, to share some new lessons, and to plan on some further We have student presentation ideas, again, which is tied a lot to technology. We have a middle school and high school teacher collaborating to offer that. We have co-treatment, oftentimes our speech people and our OT people and our PT people, they co-treat. they co-treat within the classroom, so we are offering a session for them. More technology, assessment, looking at student work, Keys to vocab, Math the Tang Way. Oftentimes, we send some of our educators out to outside conferences, and then when they come back, the expert, expectation is that they'll share with their colleagues. And in this case, Jenna had attended a workshop around the Tang method of math, and she's going to give some insights on that. Another exciting one, I think, from WPI is genetics is elementary, actually bringing that concept all the way down to like K to three levels. And this ties in a lot to what Ms. Tanfield was discussing in terms of the freshman academy, how to regulate children in a dysregulated world, so that will be interesting. More data, our special educators spend a lot of time creating MCAS alt portfolios. This is a session where Edna, who's been trained by the state, can give them feedback on their portfolios before submitting them to the state. And just as we had law for the classroom teacher in the morning, we will have law for the school administrator in the afternoon. So we have registered over 500 staff members for this day, and I have to send out a sincere thank you to Kate Flynn, who works at central office. She really took that by the bull horns and has been able to do that, which is a huge task, so kudos to her. And as Nicole mentioned, we have over 100 people that will be eating that lunch that's prepared by the International Club at the high school, that's overseen by Dan Crema, the department head of foreign language. So as you can see, it's a, it's a true team effort, right? It goes from the food service department, who will provide the coffee and in the morning, goes to the facilities department. Mr. Fahy will be moving iPad carts from school to school for me, his custodians will be making sure that tables are set up and that rooms are clean and ready, and our tech department will, will ensure there's no glitches around all the technology that will be used that day. So I say kudos to the Auburn team once again. Oh, I look forward to it, I think it'll be a great, great day, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Are there any questions?
We have one, you said you have, so every teacher is taking something offered, okay? Because you said you had 500 registered, and it seemed to imply that not every teacher was registered, so I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, no, well, everybody. Every teacher is registered, every paraprofessional is also registered, some administrators are registered, some are presenting. They also take either maybe one for the whole day, they might take three different ones, they might have one that goes two blocks in the morning and one in the afternoon, so it's a mix.
This is fantastic.
That's amazing.
Great job.
Yeah, great. Nicely done.
Thanks. It's a very comprehensive program, and it has been well received, but tremendously organized, so thank you to Dr. Lozay.
Can I ask one more question? How do you, so how do you decide who the presenters are? Do the teachers, do you ask them to present on something, or do they, do they submit what they'd like to present on, and then, and then you pick who?
We send out a slip to ask the volunteers to begin with. As we go further along in the process, we might reach out to certain individuals that we know have some sort of expertise or have been recently trained, and then we just keep asking. For the most part, they all come forward, and it's been great.
I guess we can move on to the food service.
Thank you for that, and we have one final presentation tonight. You've met previously Janice King, our new food service director, but March is National Nutrition Month, so I've asked Janice just to come in and give you a brief update about some of the many initiatives underway and kind of how she's acclimated to the Auburn Public Schools.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brunel, and thank you to the school committee, the opportunity to be here to provide you with some updates. It's actually been very amazing, it's been seven weeks since I started, and I've had roller skates on and jet skis at times. But anyway, our district-wide initiatives have been numerous, we're working to provide program assessments and action plans for our department. I've been doing organizational benchmarking to look at our, our personnel and our facilities, and we've had, we have a great staff, and I really look forward to working with them and helping to build the programs here in Auburn. I'm very excited, this is National Nutrition Month, and we have started some initiatives with our menus, and they're going to continue to roll out as we expand and utilize the inventory that we have on hand and continue to build product and menus for our students with new companies that are coming in. We are also participating in Professional Development Day this Friday. We have a Professional Development Day planned for our school nutrition staff in both districts, Leicester and Auburn, so they'll be coming here, so we're very excited about that. We've had a lot of facilities work that I've been working on, reviewing equipment at Mary D. Stone, as well as Julie Bancroft, those layout and design plans that I've been working on, we're actually designing it ourselves, so I think that's going to be a nice initiative for us. I'll be providing a presentation next week at the renovation committee on Tuesday. We've also been looking at the design plan for the new middle school, looking at it to provide recommendations, I've been provided the plans, and I've talked with Mr. Fahy, and we're going to be looking at possibly coordinating some additional discussions on those plans. I've been providing financial reviews for our program and developing our budgeting and monthly review process, so that we can stay on target financially and, you know, be in a very good position. We're looking at our food bids already, we're already actively working on our current inventory plans, as well as making great strides in our bidding process for our food decisions for next year. Our planning process will be completed by March 28th, so it's a very busy time. As far as program initiatives, we have our new online menus that have been provided out to our, our students and families and community, and some of the new initiatives that we're actually working on is by March 24th, we're going to be providing new yogurt parfaits. I've also reached out to the New England Dairy Council and filled out applications for grants for fruit smoothie machines for all of our schools. This is about $12,000 worth of grants that have been applied for, so we're hopeful that we'll be selected as recipients. We're also working on a food service survey that'll be coming out to the entire community to access feedback and get information from families of what they would like to see about our programs. And also, we'll be providing suggestion boxes to our students in all schools starting next week.
I'd like to see some of them.
Well, you certainly will, we'll provide you some feedback. We're looking at, you know, providing a lot of opportunities for students to sample products and, and our food and menu items, and this week we've had beverage samplers in for four different companies at our high school. It's been received with really positive feedback. I think the kids are pretty happy.
Yeah, that's great.
So we, we have a lot of food companies that are coming in in the next few months, and April will be our national, I mean, our effort actually, to bring in the National Farm to School Network. We'll be bringing in people from Western Mass with the communities involved in sustaining agriculture. You've probably heard of it, CISA, it's a very large organization in Western Mass, as well as the New England Dairy Council. And some of the, we will actually have some very exciting, interesting visitors to our elementary schools throughout the week, and they'll be wearing vegetable costumes, so we're going to have some fun with the kids and start helping to build that relationship that we have with them, so we're pretty excited. We just wanted to give you a few ideas, and, you know, really happy to be here, amazed at the team that I'm working with. I've just been fantastic, so I'm really part, glad to be part of this and look forward to, to doing some amazing things, being part of the educational mission here. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I'm just in awe of how much she's accomplished and what she's doing in such a short period of time, so I'm, I'm very impressed.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I love what I do, and, you know, really here to be helping the educational process, and biggest your kids are happy and healthy.
Well, you've had very competent shoes to fill, and it looks like you filled them well, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Janice has, as you can see, hit the ground running, which is, which is great.
And then some.
Yes.
I don't know if she's hit the ground yet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You might want to tell them that you hit the ground.
Oh, yes, please.
If you want to. Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Dr. Lozay, can you just hit the button to shut the projector off and then turn the light on? Okay, I see, yeah. Is it there, the remote? Up to this here, one more time. Yep.
I feel like I always have a tech test.
You did. You're good to go.
So far, it's been great.
We don't want to tell how many people, how many times you passed, though.
I know. Does it work?
You can leave it like that, we'll check in a minute, yeah. It's beautiful, yes, Auburn blue.
Bye, thank you.
Auburn blue, thanks.
Capital Improvement Plan update.
This is first, just a quick reminder regarding the public hearing on March 26th, we will have that, and after we get your final vote tonight, we will send an invitation to town meeting members, Board of Selectmen and Finances, as we typically do. The capital improvement plan update that you have in your packet, I just wanted to, after the meeting, the joint meeting that we had with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee on January 29th, we went back to review the capital plan to see if we couldn't find some funding. If you remember, there was a $200,000 or so amount of money that we were likely going to still be seeking in order to get done what we need to at the current middle school. In conversations with Mr. Kazanovich, we do, will be able to access the FY15 funding. So by doing that, the second sheet regarding the capital plan expanded, we now have the money that we believe, based on our best estimates right now, to do the full renovation of the current middle school. If you'll remember, at the Tenswanson Road facility, and our goal was always to try and minimize or not even have to have any additional impact to taxpayers, and I think that we're going to be successful in that. All of the classrooms will be painted, there'll be new carpeting in the auditorium. Probably the most significant change that people will see from the outside of the building is reconfiguring the parking lot and expanding it. So the drop-off and parent pickup area, parking lot is, is undersized, that will be corrected. As Mrs. King alluded to, we're expanding the kitchen area, the student area where they eat in the cafeteria is sufficient, but the, the kitchen area is far too small, so we're working to take the best of the equipment from JB and Paketog, excuse me, from JB and Mary D., and ultimately bring it to the new middle school, and then supplement that with some funding that we have. So as part of that, we looked at our FY15 and 16 CIPs, and as I noted in here, we had initially thought to move the modular classroom replacement from 16 to 15, but actually in, in our follow-up review, in order to maximize the amount of money available in 15 for Tenswanson Road, as well as Bryn Mawr and Paketog, we reverted and changed those back. So I would ask for your vote of support for the newly amended 15 and 16 CIP documents.
Can entertain a motion?
I'll make my motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say is hopefully we, it looks like, as the superintendent has says, that we will not have to go back out to the taxpayers. And as far as I'm concerned, I have advocated for the taxpayers, and I'm glad to hear this, and hopefully it does work out. I want to thank the superintendent and whoever else was involved in this.
Mr. Fahy and Mr. Gray, yeah, and Mr. Ringard has been involved as, as well, it's been a team, a team.
I have a comment in the question. My comment is, if we're moving any type of mechanical equipment, or we need some type of refurbishing done on a smaller level, don't hesitate to call APATH again.
Oh, great.
Because a lot of times, the mechanical departments such as plumbing, they're looking for some work to do.
Oh, great.
I'm not sure how backed up they are, but, but don't hesitate to at least ask if we can save the taxpayers a few dollars and, and give the kids a little bit of real-world experience outside of the typical house project that they do.
Great, thank you.
And my question is, do we have a name for the new school?
We don't. That is something that I plan to bring forward, at least for a start of the discussion, probably later this spring or early into the fall. So as part of those merger discussions that we have at the, with the staffing level, that's actually been brought up, what will the name be, so that, but there is not a name currently.
I hadn't thought about it.
We refer to it as Tenswanson Road.
This whole process just came to me tonight.
Yeah.
What is the school when it was called?
Right, right, right. So that's something definitely to be, that will be on the agenda coming up.
Hopefully it doesn't turn into something huge, but.
That would be, yes.
Oh, I'm sure. Well, no matter what, it ends up being, the school committee has to make that decision, and hopefully, you're absolutely right, George.
Right.
Hopefully it doesn't get to be a fiasco.
Yeah.
I like, I like the, the ring that Academy has.
Yeah, yeah.
Westford Academy, the freshman academy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't start, George.
Liz?
I just want to say to the superintendent, it is amazing that we are going to be able to do this project and not have to go to the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
It really truly is, and I don't know that anybody has really ever brought that to the public's attention and really said, thank you for all the work that you've done, so that we don't have to ask the taxpayers. If in fact, we had to go out and ask for something, which I'm not saying that we, we think we're going to have to, the fact that we, we have done it this far and, and planning it, it really is an amazing feat.
It's been a concerted effort, but I, I appreciate everybody's efforts in doing that, it's, it's not been easy, yeah.
I do have a question.
Sure.
And I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but we have some changes. Are we all satisfied as far as MSBA, you know, asking for assistance with this project on that?
In terms of the Tenswanson Road project?
Yes.
So that accelerated repair application went in, we don't anticipate that we'll probably hear, there was no definitive date at which we'd hear.
From the, from the Masbo meeting from yesterday, that MSBA representative said there'd be announcements the end of April 1st of May.
Oh, good.
On what, what projects he'll fund.
Great.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
That would be great.
And I agree with the sentiments of the committee, you did a great job.
It has, so with your approval of that and the update that I've shared with you regarding Tenswanson Road, we will share that with town manager Jacobson and CFO Kazanovich for them to share with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committees, just to keep them in the loop as well. The other items here are really just informational for you. Chris Keyes, if you remember, he was the Project 351 representative, and as noted in here, he has organized for the month of March, he's reached out very respectfully to each of the principals to bring forward a, a drive to collect clothes, coats, and shoes. That will actually go to the Cradles to Crayons organization that helps low-income children in Boston. So kudos to Chris. I'm not surprised, he is a young man who is, is very motivated and driven and a great representative, as are so many of our kids. The MASs Task Force, I had shared with you that I, I served on that. I shared with you the report that was actually a supplement or an addition to a report that had been started previously, so it gets added to over the years. And there were some recommendations, and we continue to look for support. This ties in actually nicely to the local aid resolution that was left at your seats. This actually was announced that Representative Frost was joining his colleagues in an early local aid resolution, and then just earlier today, we received notification through Senator Moore's office that what they are proposing actually does not add Chapter 70 money to the Auburn Public Schools. We did see an increase, we were one of the few communities, or not as many communities saw that. This is only step one in the process. The local aid, though, in terms of the unrestricted general government aid, saw about a $41,000 increase. So not significant for Auburn, but I did want to bring those two things to your attention, and, and we are still early in the process, certainly, for FY15 budgeting. And do want to thank Mr. Anderson, who's here, who actually wrote the article for Auburn Mass Daily regarding that. Last year seemed to be our year for audits or reviews, and this year, it seems to be more in terms of studies and, and surveys. So we were recently notified by the United States Department of Ed regarding our Title I and Title II programs. It will be targeted just towards Mary D. and Auburn Middle School, just wanted to make you aware of that. Mary D. is actually not one of our Title I schools, but all of our schools benefit from our Title II programs, so I will keep you apprised when they do actually come and the process begins, and if we get any results, I will share those with you. Great collaboration with Darlene Coyle, Auburn's Director of Public Health, along with Lynn Barrett, our health teacher at the high school. It's called the 84, a collaboration of the Health Department at the town and the Health Department at Auburn High. And the 84 actually represents the 84% of mass teenagers or youth who did not smoke when the movement began, and that's now, I'm happy to report, up to 86% of youth that do not smoke. But it's really a collaborative effort to engage our students in educational activities that really promote positive messaging, healthy lifestyle, and avoiding alcohol, excuse me, avoiding tobacco, alcohol too, but avoiding. me, avoiding tobacco, alcohol too, but avoiding tobacco. So a nice collaboration I just wanted to bring to your attention. As I've shared with you before, Mr. Bouvier, and this is part of the Central Mass Readiness Center, but he is offering a webinar series, actually it began back on February 26th and will run through April 9th. This one titled, "The Flipped Classroom: What Is It and How Do I Get Started?" So it's benefiting Auburn teachers who have signed up because, but because of the way that it's been structured, it's, there's remote access from any central mass school district, so they run the gamut. So I thank Mr. Bouvier and Dr. Lozay for working with me on that. It really is a benefit to our teachers, for sure.
Moving on to unfinished business.
So the Julia Bancroft and Pakachog merger, just a quick update regarding this. As reported to you before, we have had a meeting of our staffs, JB and PAC. We have another one scheduled for April 1st. We've got another one scheduled in June, I believe it's June 3rd, and have really planned out the work that needs to happen. We also have been working with the PTOs in terms of the joining of those and what that will ultimately look like, because when we bring the two schools together at Tenswanson Road, what we now have is a District 1 PTO of JB and Bryn Mawr and District 2 of Mary D. and PAC. If we bring grades three to five together, if a new PTO is formed, what should the others look like? So those discussions are ongoing, and I will tell you of the discussions just generally across the board, teachers, parents, the community in general, I hear concerns about this, and I don't think that's unusual. I think we should expect that there would be, anytime we are looking to make a change in what people know and feel comfortable with, even small changes or grand changes can really have an impact. So we're really, I think, ahead of the game on this. We're taking what will amount to just about two years to be very thoughtful in our planning around this. And in the end, it will be a success, and there are always bumps in the roads, but we're getting there, so it's good progress being made. It's exciting, exciting times, an awful lot being changed though. In terms of the FY15 budget, so I had shared with you previously that the recommendation of the town manager and the chief financial officer, which was brought to the Board of Selectment, is a 2.96% increase for the schools. If you remember, our request that we sent forward was a 3.53% increase, which amounted to a dollar value of $127,476. So as part of that, as I, as we always do, Mr. Gray and I brought it back to the leadership team. And at this point, the only recommended change that I bring to you, we reviewed through this, and due to a student change in need, we will not need the one-to-one school nurse position. That's a value of $36,083. So by reducing that, it actually brings the difference between what the school committee is requesting and the town is recommending at this point, still early in the process, is a difference of $91,393. So it is my recommendation at this point that you support a budget for FY15 of $23,072,65, which represents an increase of 3.37%.
I'll make the motion to support the budget recommendation of $23,072,65, which represents an increase of 3.37%.
Second. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Manasfo.
And I think as we've always done, we'll continue to monitor information as it becomes available, but that will be the presentation we'll make at the public hearing two weeks from tonight. A reminder as we do, that bus applications are due June 1st this year. They have been shared via email on numerous occasions, available at all the schools, on the website, and certainly here at Central Office. The PARC update, as you know, the field testing for that will take place, actually it will start at the end of March, depending if it's the performance-based, the earlier one, or the end of year, which is later, that will take place. So I did share with you, this is a sample letter that was created that actually went to the parents of the students in the particular classes. DESI is, and it's being run through DESI, but there are steps along the way, so we had to put in information and classes were randomly selected. We did not select classes for this. And we've sent this out to parents, and we've not gotten any feedback from parents on this. But as you know, the town meeting actually supported the purchase of iPads, and I'm actually happy to report to all of you that we had requested approximately $108,000. And I'm going to share with town meeting, I meant to bring the exact figure, but after Mr. Bouvier's checking with Apple, obviously to try and get the best prices, the parts we were uncertain of were the keyboards that we would need for that, as well as the cases. PARC dictated that you couldn't take the field test on an iPad only, you had to have an external keyboard that was attached to it. So Mr. Bouvier did his due diligence, actually tried out for a couple of weeks various different models. But it actually, the price, although it was approved for $108 or thereabouts, it was about $20,000 less than that. So we will share that with town meeting when we send them the invitation. The goal was always to use the amount of money that we needed to use to get what we wanted, or get what we needed, I should say, for our students. So I think the town meeting members will be appreciative of that, and the money just returns to the general, general fund.
Nice. Always nice to give back.
It is, it is. School Building Committee, our efforts continue on that. We had our pre-construction/construction meeting this morning, those happened, they were happening twice a month, starting this week, they'll happen every month. And if you got a chance to read the district newsletter, we have a trailer out back, and we actually have a very large piece of equipment out there. They were doing some surveying, the fence is about to go in, so so much work is going on behind the scenes in meetings, whether they're at night or during the day, looking at interior and exterior finishes. But I know that people have been anxious to see some physical change out there, including myself, and we were very happy. It was one day last week, I think the Dave Fontaine Jr. from Fontaine Brothers thought I was crazy when I said to him, "Can you please send me a photo of that trailer arriving? Because I want to send it out to everybody." So wanted everyone to see. Good things. And then the Master Plan Team, actually we have the same night for both of these groups. We'll meet again on March 25th. We met on February 25th, we'll meet again on March 25th, and both groups are working diligently. And I commend Mark Imzy, the Chair of the SBC, as well as all members. Those meetings are coming quickly and regularly, and I think they will continue to, and also to Mr. Ringardt and the whole team on the Master Plan Team. It's really great that people are devoting so much of their time to this process, it really is appreciated.
To the Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank them publicly, and if you could pass that along to them, because we never really seem to cross paths and make it to those meetings, and they're not typically at our meetings unless they're making a presentation. But yeah, just tell them that we thank them.
I will do that.
For the hard work.
I definitely will do that. One thing I meant to mention, we have set a date for the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Auburn Middle School. It will be Thursday, April 17th at 10 o'clock. You will all be receiving invitations. We've been doing some planning around what that will look like, and our sincere goal is to really keep it focused on the students. So we have some ideas about getting students who will actually enter the new middle school when it's first opened, as well as some younger kids. So we've got some great ideas to involve them. So it should be a nice event, and of course, we are hoping, hoping that the snow will be long gone by April 17th. We want a sunny day, if anyone's listening, and, but we will be planning for the worst with a tent, but hoping for the best, so it'll be a nice, nice event.
Sounds good. Moving on to new business.
The school calendar for next school year, and as I noted in here, and even looking ahead, as we've been planning for the opening of the middle school in the fall of 2015, really want to maximize the time we have available in the summer of 2015. A lot of the work that we are going to be doing to Tenswanson Road will be taking place this summer as well as next, we've got that plotted out, to Pakachog as well, any updates or Bryn Mawr that need to be made, but also opening a new school. So it's, it's an aggressive timeline, but it's one that we can certainly keep. So what I have before you, we did survey our parents and staff. We had 733 who participated, which was a fantastic rate, quite honestly. It's about a 23% participation rate, which as surveys go, I think is a pretty impressive rate. And so based on this feedback and looking at what we need to have that summer, I have this calendar for you. It does start us on the 25th, Students Day starts on the 26th. We've shifted a professional day to the end of the school year and has students out barring no snow days, which is unlikely to happen in Massachusetts, just with our winters, would be June 8th. While I don't have yet a calendar for you for 15, 16, actually in the fall of 15, Labor Day falls on Monday, September 7th. I actually think at this point, probably my recommendation will be, and I'm just continuing to consider it as we plan out the work that will happen in the summer of 15, that we may be able to start on Tuesday, September 1st, which is more in keeping with our typical timeline. It does abbreviate the February vacation week, it will give the students basically a four and a half day weekend, and they would be back for the 18th, 19th and 20th. The April vacation remains intact. And pretty much everything else, we did eliminate one of the half-days, we were able to reconfigure that, but pretty much everything else, oh, other than Good Friday, we'll be in school on that day, and that was what 86% of parents had indicated that they were in support of this. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but this is my recommended calendar.
I'll entertain a motion, then we can open for discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, George.
I just have a question, as far as the Auburn Education Association goes, things went well with them, I assume, and they've agreed to this.
They have, and actually, this calendar does not require that we open their contract at all. So I did, I've been, actually, this has been broached with them for a couple of years, anticipating and ever hopeful that the townspeople would support the new project as they did. And then just this past Monday, I did share this with them, so they're aware of the recommendation and were appreciative of the. It's not a perfect calendar for any one individual or group, but they were very much heard and I believe are in support of this.
Okay, great. We're never going to please everyone, I just wanted to make sure there'd be no repercussions down the road.
Sure, yeah, there are no contractual issues in this, none.
Excellent.
Yes, please.
I'm trying to think of how many years ago, it was probably 10 years ago, that we tried taking away February vacation. And I can remember that it was some incredibly large percentage of students that were out sick during that time, because we just couldn't get the illness out of the school.
Sure.
So my, I don't have a problem taking, eliminating it, but let the school committee know how that, how that goes.
Sure, absolutely.
Because that was the reason we brought it back, was because we found so many kids were getting sick because there was no break from the school.
Yeah, and what we tried to do was to look at the calendar to be sure that we did strategically place some long weekends. And that's why we put the February 13th, the half-day on a Friday afternoon to give the students a little bit more of a break. The March PD Day, we were originally going to put on April 3rd, Good Friday, but that left March without a break, so we wanted to put that break in for students, you know, to try and give them, give them some long weekends, so hopefully it will work. But I will, we'll be monitoring this throughout the year, certainly, yeah.
And then I have another question. So then also, what you, what we would also be looking at, I'm assuming, is the fact that we now have to heat the schools during that week, and we don't know how that would affect.
Yeah, we'd have to monitor that. I mean, the heat is turned down somewhat, but it's not turned off, I mean, at that time of year. So I don't know that we'd really see a significant or even a substantial amount, but we'll certainly be looking at that as well. Yeah.
Are there any other, oh, I'm sorry, to the calendar.
Yeah, just a vote. I think people's first.
All those in favor of the?
Aye.
Good as a vote.
Upcoming events, as Kyle, Anne or Nicole, I forget which, Footloose, it promises to be great, the kids do, and the directors, everybody involved, there were so many parents who helped too. I was at a class at the high school on Monday afternoon, and there were parents of students in the play who were bringing in food and costumes to help, so it's a huge team effort. That's Friday and Saturday night, and just lots of great things. The All-State Conference for our music students are participating, and again, hopefully people saw the March District Newsletter, it really focused on the arts, wellness, athletics and STEM, just great things happening. Our students continue to be recognized, which is really nice. They had a show, it was in the cafeteria prior to the chorus concert that I attended last Tuesday night. And just, we have some really talented, talented children, so from a non-artist, I appreciate it even more. A non-artist, non-singer, I appreciate it even more, so.
Does anyone else have anything of the new business?
Go ahead.
Go right down the line.
I have the last two meetings, I had to recuse myself, and I find, I found myself sitting out there looking here. And so I'm curious if anybody would agree with me, if we could perhaps find out what it would cost to get the new, the new curtain around the table, it really looks awful. And I don't know if anybody wants to get these cleaned, or, I would just like to know how much it would kind of cost, because it's looking pretty, I mean, we've been here for at least 15 years, I'd like to see them, what it would cost to get them cleaned.
Sure, we could keep both of those.
Like Casey said, we could do some redecorating once in a while.
I don't know if we could redecorate it, but they.
I regret saying that, yeah.
At least cleaned, right?
At least cleaned, yeah.
Yeah. I think a freshening up is in order, I would agree.
I'll take a new chair if, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Oh, no. Now you're going overboard.
Leanne, do you have anything?
I do. I had the opportunity to be part of the search committee for the assistant principal position up at the middle school, and we had 14 interviews on this past Saturday. Beautiful day, stuck inside cement walls, but it was well worth it. I have to first say that the quality of the candidates that came in were just beyond belief. I was extremely impressed with everybody that came before us. They did their homework, like unbelievably. I mean, there wasn't a question that any one of the candidates could not answer, they really all did their homework. And there was a lot of extremely positive comments that came from some of the candidates, so I just wanted to share it with the community and with them at the committee, because I was thrilled just listening to the comments that they were making. Candidate said they were most, most impressed with the connection between the Auburn Middle School and the high school initiative that goes on, and the collaboration that goes on between the two schools. They're thrilled with the STEM, the STEM program, the innovative school. Looking at our website, you can absolutely see the community backs the school district, which you don't see in a lot of communities. They were especially impressed with the fact that we were able to get town meeting to vote on a new middle school when we were still paying for a new high school. They said that, you know, Auburn was absolutely a place that they wanted to be, because they knew that the community supported education. And the other thing that they were saying is the website, and kudos to you and your leadership team with this one, Dr. Bernal, because they said there wasn't a thing you didn't know about that was going on in the school district by looking at that website. They said the initiatives that are going on and just, and because of the fact that we promote, we the people, and we promoted STEM projects, and we were promoting all kinds of different initiatives that every school was doing, and publishing it and putting it out there for the community to see and stuff, and so I just wanted to share that stuff, that the candidates were, yeah, they're just, they're climbing to come and work here, so it's, it's really good, really good stuff, so.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, it was a, it was a really, really, very satisfying. Yeah, it was a, it was a really, really very satisfying experience.
Leanne?
I would just like to say, I know you, they had said about a town meeting vote, but I would like to let the people know the residents in this town had voted for it too.
Yeah.
That's it. No, I just want to make sure they know that.
Yeah.
Leanne brings up a good point, and thank you for representing us, Leanne. She brings up transparency with our website, but I just want to go back just for a second. When we talked about those iPads and the $108,000 that was appropriated by town meeting, it was appropriated to the schools. We could spend that. And that just goes, speaks volumes for the transparency and the openness of Dr. Brunel and our team, that we didn't need that. So we're not just going to spend it for the sake of spending it, like some districts do. I know tonight, we're going in, those that are watching, with a budget that's somewhat over what the town is recommending, but knowing that we will make those cuts if need be, if we have to, not knowing that the numbers aren't there, that we're being transparent. We're showing these are the needs of the district and how we want to move forward. So I really, I stress that transparency that Leanne talks about, I think, also speaks volumes, that our kids do deserve the very best. And to see these administrators, these teachers coming out to try to join your team, or our team, speaks volumes for the work we've done and the work you've done as a superintendent. So very proud to be a part of the team, of the committee, as we move forward in these, you know, these goals and these aspirations of what we're accomplishing, like you're saying, with one school still on the funding blocks, and the middle school passed first vote through. And it's full support town-wide, you know, residents, administration, and the district. Kudos to you for really supplying the information people need to make a conscientious decision. So I thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It's a great effort on the team, yeah.
I also, the fact that we have, it's great to be in a position where you have a lot of candidates that want to come and be a middle school vice principal, because they're the ones that are in charge of discipline, right? So the fact, I think that says a lot about our kids. And this community should be very thankful that obviously, parents and teachers put a lot of time in, and it pays off, because our students are good kids. And we don't have a lot of problems that other districts have with their students. So we're doing, we're doing good.
We are, we are indeed. Happy days. Happy days. One new piece of information to share. Mr. Gray has submitted his resignation effective June 30th. He actually has accepted a position as an Assistant Superintendent of Operations in Carver. So we certainly wish him well. And we will be posting for that position tomorrow. And we'll be establishing a search committee. So if any members are so inclined, I would like to move quickly on this, probably within the next few months, if people are interested in serving.
I just want to say, didn't we reject us? I'd just like to say, it was great having you here, and I'm sorry you're leaving so soon, but I think all your financial reports and everything you have done has been great. And it's been different having you here versus the old one. And I'd just like to thank you for all your support and your help.
Well, thank you. And just a couple of brief comments. I think that this was a difficult position to be in at some point, because obviously, I came and was attracted as the Assistant Principal at the middle school and other team members, because this is a great place to work. And this is a personal objective of mine, obviously. But at the same time, I'd like to say that I leave not worrying, because a hallmark of any great organization is that while one piece may come and go, it continues to move forward. And under Dr. Brunel's leadership, the leadership team, your backing, the community's backing, and an outstanding business office, I feel that you won't even see a blip. And while I've certainly enjoyed this and it's added to my resume to work for municipality, which has led to this position, I certainly will fondly recall my brief tenure here. And I will obviously be checking in on a regular basis. And I'm sure that without a doubt, you'll continue to do great things as you move forward. So thank you for this opportunity, and I certainly have appreciated my tenure here, so.
Thank you.
Liz?
Mr. Gray, I too am sorry to see you leave. You weren't here for very long, but we certainly appreciated the work that you did. I cannot let the, and aside from you leaving, I cannot let the comment that was just made go by without reacting to it, because I feel like where you did a wonderful job, Mr. Dede also did a fantastic job. And I was always sure when I did, looked at a bill schedule, that everything was in line. So I think we've been very lucky to have the business managers that we've had.
And I stand by my statement.
To the Chair, I'm a glutton for punishment, but.
We know.
If, no, if the committee doesn't mind, I would be happy to serve on that search committee for a new business manager, if the committee so chooses.
Would you like that in the form of a motion?
I would, actually, that would be great.
I'd make the motion to put Leanne on the search committee.
I'll second that.
Good weather's coming.
We're going to do it outside.
On a Saturday.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but if you went on, then we would have to just be specific. About this one, yeah. But if we just leave it at that, we can put her on all of them.
All the above?
Yeah.
Taking a motion for all the above, no matter what comes forward in the next six months.
Not that I know of, no.
For the next six months.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor of Leanne serving on the Business Manager Search Committee?
Oh, you cut our leg off.
It is a unanimous vote. And again, thank you, Leanne. I really do appreciate you stepping up.
I'm getting used to this now.
It's good.
Hopefully you'll have good news to report back to us as you do.
And again, I'm sorry to see you leave as well. So congratulations, but we'll miss you.
Thank you for your service. Moving on to Mr. Gray's business financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first article did list before you is the draft warrant articles. As the superintendent's memo indicates, at the March 10 meeting, the court of selection did open up the warrants, and they will be open until Monday, March 31st. So before you, you see six warrant articles. The first four warrant articles deal with the discussion we've had already regarding the capital improvement plan money that has been set aside from the Julia Bancroft and the Mary D. Stone schools over the last several years. As we've discussed, this is a request to the town meeting to move those funds into the 10 Swanson Road renovation projects. Articles five deals with the annual request to transfer the funds that we receive on behalf of Medicaid receipts from the general fund into our operating budget for 2015. Point out the fact that this amount is the exact amount that we received in 2014. So at this point, there is no request for additional Medicaid funding to be transferred from Article five. Article six is the standard spring town meeting request to move interest earned from the Auburn High School Gendazium Health and Recreational Trust Fund. The amount yet to be determined, because the town accountant will not receive that information until sometime in April, at which time we will then fill that amount as it moves forward at town meeting. So likewise, as noted in the superintendent's memo, the master plan team will be asked to vote in their support of Articles one through four, which deal directly with the 10 Swanson Road renovation. So I would ask that the committee, if they have no questions, vote to approve the warrant articles as presented for the May 6, 2014, town meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
The next order of business, as you may recall, a few meetings ago, there was a request from the staff at the high school to create a special memorial for Mr. Renholm, who was one of our custodians to high school, who passed away last October. In discussions with Mr. Kasenovitch, Chief Financial Officer of the town, he recommended that the school committee vote to approve a special revenue account, so that funds that were accepted on behalf of the memory of Mr. Renholm and then were to be expended would be attributed to this special revenue account. And we could account for that for any projects that they raised money for and they vote to approve. So I ask that the school committee.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second for discussion. So if we, I understand we would need to have this, we would need to establish this account. What happens, and I'm not saying that I'm going to, that this will come to fruition, but what happens if we decide that there is not an appropriate place at the high school to put a memorial? You know, we, I mean, we're kind of putting, I guess it's not really putting the cart before the horse, but it's sort of like, assuming we're going to have, we're approving this account, we're basically approving the fact that we're going to have some sort of memorial for him.
That's an excellent question.
So they've actually had a meeting regarding that. Mr. Fahy was part of that meeting. And what they're hoping to do is to place a bench somewhere on the property of the high school. So when people are there visiting, that it would be, so something small and respectful. It would not be having the naming that we've had coming for us. So probably on the bench might be a small thing that just recognized him. And the idea is to put some plants around it, because he was an avid gardener. So that's what they're thinking is, so it would be a low-key, yet very tasteful remembrance of him.
Excellent question.
Good question.
To the Chair. Have them contact me, Dr. Brunel, at APAD. I may be able to help them out with something.
Okay, great.
Make an assortment of benches and also.
Great.
Are able to have some engraving done. I'm not sure exactly what they, what they're looking for. If anything I can do to help, I would certainly do that.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor? Can you say the rest of the points?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote.
The next piece of paper you have before you is a new piece of paper that I would assume will be updated as time goes on. Mr. Fahy and I, in discussion with Dr. Brunel, realize that over the next couple of years, there are a number of projects that will be going out for bid. Not only are we looking to, as you know, build our new middle school, but design services and other things for the 10 Swanson Road project. We're in the process of putting out an invitation for bid for our out-of-district spent transportation, which is in the final year of completion, which requires us to go back out, as well as other capital improvements that have been approved by the town or will be approved by the town in previous years and the current year. So this is a list that will ultimately grow, and if there's additional detail you'd like to see. But Mr. Fahy and I felt that this would be an appropriate way, not only to track, but to keep the school committee up to date on what's going on and what kind of process we need to go through in order to make sure the projects are on track and keep you informed of where we are in various phases of each project.
Thanks, thank you.
The next order of business is transfers. Once again, there's two sets of transfers. One is for your information, as they do not need transfers between function codes. Once again, this time of year, transfers pick up, because as we look at our budgets and we look at things that either have come up with a shortfall and we're looking to adjust, we do so with the utmost caution and make sure that we're doing things prudent to make sure that as the budget progresses towards the end of fiscal year, we're in fine financial shape. So the first one is transfers for information, which there are a number of them. And then on the reverse side is one transfer that I request that you consider. As you know, we are currently in a, with our director, Special Services. We have Mrs. Coffin, who's filling in on a part-time basis. So we know that we will have savings from that account. So I'm asking that some of that money be transferred to correct shortfalls in the athletic official trainer and game management ice time that we currently identify.
I'll make the motion to approve the transfer from 2,000 to 3,000 series as requested by the new business manager.
Second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And the last order of business from a financial standpoint is your year-to-date budget report. Once again, myself and the business office team, along with Dr. Brunel, have gone through this. I'm happy to report that financially, at this point in time, we are in very good shape. As we get into the home stretch of the fiscal year, we're in the process, once again, of intensifying our analysis of the financial statements to make sure that as we get to the end of the year, that we have everything covered. And that, once again, happy to report that at this point in time, we are in very good financial state.
Thank you. Well, if there are no questions, I believe we do have to go into.
We do.
Executive session, so I would entertain a motion, and then a roll call vote.
I'd like to motion to go into executive session per MGL Chapter 30, Section 21A, free of the grand strategy with respect to negotiations with union and non-union personnel.
Second.
Mrs. Grivens?
Yes.
Mrs. Seabring?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Lory?
Yes, good night, everyone.